Hello, everybody. I will now call back to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education meeting for December 5th, 2017. May I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Mrs. Kryling?
Here.
Mr. Marcusson?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Nemecus?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. It's December already. A lot happens at Lake Forest High School in December. It's year-end performances, getting ready for finals, and the holidays. The holidays are a mixed bag for most people, and I'm one of those most people. I love the energy, the childlike excitement, the generosity, family, and a strong feeling of gratitude and thankfulness. It also creates stress and anxiety. I read a couple of things recently that made me think about a possible channel for that. Dr. Arun Gandhi, Mahatma Gandhi's grandson, spoke to students in Winnetka. When talking about his grandfather, he described anger as fuel. He believed anger was a gift, and we should be ashamed when we abuse the gift and misuse anger. So, my thought: Wouldn't it be great if we could do that with every emotion? Wouldn't it be great if we could teach our kids to accept and channel their emotions and use them as gifts? Period. Stop. Done. If we can do that, I think we'll sleep a little better. My last thought is a little bit of a plug. Frontline is a great show on WTTW where I work. The show tells stories others can't or won't, stories that question, explain, and change our world. We had a recent program on poverty, Poor Kids in America. Eleven million kids in America, one in seven kids, live in poverty. There was a line from that show that struck me that I think has some relevance here. Here it is. "The gradual erosion of belief in possibility has devastating effects on mental health." The gradual erosion of belief in possibility. Kids, even kids from really tough situations, are hopeful and believe most everything is possible. The gradual, slow loss of hope is often worse than the trauma itself. I'm not comparing our kids to kids living in poverty, but I believe there are some lessons. Our kids at LFHS believe they can change the world. It's our job as parents, community members, teachers, and staff to keep them safe, obviously, but not so safe that they lose the belief in possibility. Something to think about as we look for hope in this frenetic, sometimes crazy, holiday season and world. So, Mike?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Marcusson, and I will hand off to Dr. Holland to begin.
Okay, so everyone's probably looking over, wondering who's sitting next to me. So, we have Colin and Charlie, who are members of Student Council. They are going to give our student report today, and they're going to start by introducing themselves.
Hello, everybody. My name is Charlie Pickus, and I'm the senior class vice president.
My name is Colin McDonald, and I'm the executive board secretary for Student Council. So lately in Student Council, we just had a successful food drive. Every year around Thanksgiving, Student Council partners with Ms. Nelson Study Halls to bring in food, and we kind of, we bring the food to different food pantries. So this year, we helped support Shields Township, which is a local food pantry. We collected various non-perishable items during the month of November. And the Pine Shadows Elementary, the school in Houston that the senior Student Council gave supplies to, they sent us a bunch of pictures and thank you cards for the donations, which was really nice. And then we have the Holiday Spirit Week coming up, where we dress up with pajamas and all that stuff. And then we adopted a family with 10 children, and we're going holiday shopping soon for them as well.
And then other news, just going around in the school, we had our Chill Scout Day on November 15th, and it was just a fun and effective way to give students a break from the stress of every day's school day, and it was during their lunch periods, just to relax. We had a yoga day, and they gave out essential oils, and a lot of people liked that. We have a really great freshman sophomore play, the Brothers Grimm Spectaculathon. We have winter sports in session now. We have boys' basketball, girls' basketball, boys' wrestling, boys' swimming, and girls' gymnastics. We have our Holiday Spaghetti Dinner on December 9th, and the band, orchestra, and chorus will perform there. And the Madrigals and Bel Canto's Holiday Acapella Groups have started to perform, and they had their first performance on Sunday, and they'll continue to do so until the day before winter break.
Thank you both for filling in with that information. I believe the holiday, the concert's the 10th, Sunday, yes? So, as stated, we're shocked that it's December. It feels like this year has flown by. And just thinking about, not that I'm jumping ahead to next year, this time next year, we'll have final exams. This year is the last year on the books so far that we'll have exams in January, the traditional time. As you might remember, last year, we engaged a process to discuss this with all stakeholder groups, and next year is our first year of implementing that. We are in the process of working with our center schools and districts regarding the transition of students from eighth grade into the high school. We started this work as early as September, and as many of you know, our eighth graders took the PSAT 8 in October. Families will receive that information and the scores this week. They just came in yesterday. As a reminder, the PSAT is one of many data points. We use both quantitative and qualitative data points to help inform our placement recommendations for students. Our number-one question across our leadership team is, what is a student's next level of challenge, and how can we support them in being successful? The PSAT also, the PSAT 8 also informs our student growth model, and that helps us assess our overall academic program. We're also in the process of finalizing our plans to share with families of our incoming freshmen what our course offerings are. We typically have a curriculum night. We're going to finalize our plans regarding that tomorrow, actually. But we're also planning a brand-new experience. It's called the Scout Experience. We all believe that the high school has so many wonderful things to offer, and there's nothing like seeing the excitement of our freshmen, incoming freshmen, and their families. I know there's a lot of anxiety, but the high school is a wonderful place. And so, we're going to create a night in January called the Scout Experience, where you'll walk into the fieldhouse, and all departments will be represented, IDs as well as teachers. All of our clubs and activities will be represented with students. All of our athletic programs represented. It's really going to be a buzzing place, where students will be able to ask questions of students, to get information about everything that we have to offer. Families can ask questions of our IDs and teachers regarding the departments. Additionally, we'll have performances and demonstrations in our competition gym. So we're trying something different this year. We'll be communicating out that information within the upcoming week, but we're excited about that. It's something new, but we feel like we need to showcase what we have to offer more, and that's what we're planning on doing. As many of you know, we've talked about this in various forums, vaping and juling right now is, and the use of e-cigarettes, is a less-than-positive trend at the high school right now. It's illegal for students under 18 to possess or use e-cigarettes. These items are very easily accessible to kids online, and we've discussed these issues in our APT meetings, as well as various liaison meetings. And both District 115 and 67 have partnered with LEED around this issue. Information has gone out to our faculty regarding what to look for, as well as what to do if there's ever a run-in with this situation. All of our freshman wellness classes have attended seminars and workshops led by LEED, as well as our SAP coordinator, around this topic. And we've also had different presentations for sophomore, juniors, and seniors. APT has been helpful, LEED has been helpful, but also the city of Lake Forest has been extremely helpful, and they are in the process of formalizing a few things to support us more with curtailing this issue. Although these products have a high level of nicotine, Jules specifically, we have found that in finding out more about why this is happening, our students have named that there's less of a social stigma around this than using tobacco products. Additionally, we're, not everyone feels like it's a bad thing as well, so we have consequences for this, these behaviors in the high school, but we're also dealing with some situations where it's not seen as a problem in some of our homes, and the deans are working through all of these things. As I mentioned, LEED's been a partner. We encourage parents to speak with their children, your students about these issues, and please continue to reach out with questions and concerns. Our deans have been at the forefront of communicating this, but I receive calls and others receive calls, and as soon as we receive them, we respond, because we want to make sure everyone is informed. We are working with APT and LEED. Following winter break, we will have parent information meetings, so everyone can hear more about this, as well as some of the important ways, some of the ways that you can talk with students about this issue. LEED actually led workshops at the end of last year as well, and so this has been an ongoing conversation, because it's showing up in a variety of different ways, and we're learning a lot through this process. We are continuing to find ways to, to address this issue. I do want to mention that Mike's a part of a superintendent's group, I'm a part of a principal's group, and this is playing out differently across different districts. In my principal's group, this was a fad or a trend last year, and many of them stated that, and these are local schools that are in our conference, that they're, they're no longer dealing with this as an issue. Some of our local private schools are dealing with it. And so, really, it's playing out differently, and so we're trying to address our contextual needs regarding it. Lastly, I just came back right before this meeting from Lake Bluff Middle School, my second home, I feel like. I attended a parent meeting with administrators in that district regarding standards-based reporting, and all of their efforts regarding that. Our district applauds the work that's happening in Lake Bluff Middle School, and we believe that the work they're doing is important, especially because it's focused on clarifying learning expectations. Although our district has not decided to adopt the same model and fully the same practices, our work is aligned at its core. In our district, we've engaged in a multi-year initiative to ensure that all of our courses are mapped, and that we've clarified our learning expectations across all of our courses. Having a guaranteed and viable curriculum means that we articulate what we want our kids to know and be able to do in all of our classes. In order for any district, just like 65, to adopt these standard, adopt standards-based reporting, it means that they have already engaged the work that is underway here, which is at the foundation of it. And I know they're working to ensure that parents are informed, students are informed, and teachers are informed. This directly, after that work, after the work that they did to clarify learning expectations, and similar with us, the next part of that is really examining grading practices. Unfortunately, grades are easily inflated, and the same grade can and often does mean something different by teacher. Grading structures that align with mastery-only is work that is directly connected to articulating expectations. In this case, grades are no longer inflated by bumps, curves, bringing in a box of tissues, or extra credit that is often given for fulfilling menial tasks that have nothing to do with demonstrating knowledge or improving in an, in an area. And so, similar to District 65, they started with clarifying their learning expectations, and then asked where each student is along that continuum of learning. And I just want to mention that sometimes the hardest thing for districts to do is to move, remove obstacles that interfere or stop us, or stop us from engaging with the heart of the matter, which is really learning and growth. Unfortunately, these obstacles are often directly connected to practices that are the norm, also how we were assessed, and how we understand education. They're also connected to social status sometimes. While District 65 has adopted standards-based reporting and are definitely doing the right work, we're going to continue our efforts in this district to clarify our learning expectations in all of our courses, and then move to discuss whether or not our current grading practices are supporting or interfering with students, teachers, and parents truly knowing where students are with our learning expectations. In February, during our Tri-District Day with District 65 and District 67, we'll all come together to discuss these efforts that are taking place across all three districts, and discuss a shared vision of our work ahead. We're all at different places with this work, but at the foundation, we believe that, grades aside, our number-one charge is to make sure that we're clear on what we expect our kids to experience in our classrooms.
Thank you, Dr. Holland. And part three of the superintendent's report would be a, Jen, could you provide a brief update on anything that's changed financially since our last meeting?
Okay. Thank you. Part four is a celebration of some student success. So, Lindley, would you mind coming up to the podium for us? So, this is Lindley Weisner, and Lindley won the Illinois Tollway Map Cover Competition this year. There are 120 students that submitted artwork, and there were 22,000 votes that were cast for the top 10 pieces, and the public's vote narrowed the field to four finalists, and Lindley's map cover will be available at all Illinois Oasis during the entire year of 2018. How cool is that? So, Lindley, tell us anything that you found interesting about the process and the award.
Okay. Thank you for inviting me tonight. I've had so much fun in graphic design this year with Mrs. Bielski, and she's the one that told me about this contest, and I'm so glad she did, because I learned a lot about Illinois, and I think I really improved in graphic design. And I'm also really thankful for all the support from the school and administration, and all my teachers, and friends, and classmates. Thank you.
So, tell us what you learned about Illinois.
Oh, wow. So, at first, I like, didn't really know a ton of interesting things about Illinois, but I learned, like, I have a lot of things about the city on there, so I wanted to include the skyline, and I have a dinosaur on the top for the field museum. And also, one of the requirements was about transportation, so I put like a plane, and I have a train on there. And also, I did an outline to look like a road to tie in kind of with the Tollway. Sorry?
What is it, a box?
Oh, that's actually the Ferris wheel at Navy Pier on the left. Oh, a pizza. I were not allowed to use logos or anything, because copyright, so the baseball and the bat is on there.
Very creative.
I had one other question. Did you draw each of those icons, or were they clip art that you arranged?
I did it in Photoshop, so I found a picture of each of the little symbols, and then I outlined them on the computer, so I kind of drew it myself, but it's not hand-drawn.
They were just so clean. Yeah, that-
Oh, thank you.
So, what were the requirements of, so they must have given you some sort of guidance on this, or how did that play out?
Yeah, so since it's celebrating the bicentennial, the requirements were to show things about like culture and famous landmarks, and also since it's for the Tollway, about transportation. So, I tried to include as much in there as I could about the city, and sports, and like state animals, and flowers, and everything.
Well, this is really cool, Lindley.
Thank you.
I'm really proud of you, and thank you for coming tonight, so we can celebrate you, and every time we go into an oasis, you'll be all we think about.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Now, try to keep up with that for excitement. Okay, so, the exciting conclusion of the superintendent's report is coming up. So, we had a very well-attended meeting last night at the RMA. Three hundred and thirty to three hundred and fifty people attended, and I wanted to ask Ms. Davis if she wanted to share a little bit of, a couple of her observations from that.
He said a couple on purpose. I said, I can get it down to three. I started with six or seven, but I think I'm down to three. So, Julie Lithcott-Hames, as you guys all probably know, is the author of How to Raise an Adult. She was, for 10 years, the dean of freshmen at Stanford. She was a phenomenal speaker. She was relatable. She was funny. She was empathetic. And God bless her, she told stories about things she is still messing up with her kids, even at this point, as the author of the book, which made it so easy to listen to everything that she had to say. I will now say the two things that I have limited myself to. The one is that we know that social and emotional learning is one of the most important goals that we have as a district. It's one of the things that all of us as parents are concerned about, and we often feel, I think, frustrated that we're saying to Dr. Holland and to her team, what are you doing? What are you doing? The thing that I loved the most about this presentation was, this was very practical advice for parents. What are you doing? And in a very pragmatic way, she gave us a lot of information about how we can help our children become adults, and how we can teach them resilience, not that different than the resilience that Reese was referring to. So, I felt like it was one of the most direct ways in which we were taught to specifically as parents, not, here's what you can do for your kid, or here's what your kid ought to be doing, but this is what you ought to be doing.
Or not doing.
Or not doing, which leads me to my other point. She also, somebody sort of gave the best question I could think of, because they stood up and said, I am a parent to a 17-year-old, an 18-year-old, and a 19-year-old, so in addition to like writing an apology letter for all the things I've done wrong, what else can I do? And her first piece of advice was, you are the parent, you are not writing an apology letter, which was great. But then in addition, she had some very practical advice, not only for the, here's how to teach your eight-year-old how to do chores, for those of us whose kids are past that stage, but here's how you can engage with your older teens, and you can still have those conversations with them about how they need to be taking charge of their lives. And the entire theme of it was, it is, you are doing them a disservice if you don't let them become adults, if you are indicating to them that they are not trustworthy, and that they are not fully capable of standing on their feet and getting back up on their feet when they fall. And it was super awesome, and I told her I was a fangirl, and I just, I hope that if you were not there, that you will take the time to either read or listen to her book. It was, it was a phenomenal event. Every parent around me laughed out loud. We were talking to each other in the middle. It was, it was spontaneous, you know, this is what I do, and confessions to each other. It was, it was a phenomenal night.
There are authors that write books and are not presenters, and she happens to be a complete anomaly. She is really, really engaging. One of the great things is she also gave us permission to tape that, and so we can put that on our website for our staff and our parents to continue to see. She is a tour de force in person, really. She has a new book coming out also. She's biracial, so that, that's a new book that she's got, and then she's also got an offer to write a sequel to How to Raise an Adult. I believe it's How to Be an Adult is the title. So, that was a, a really, it was a wonderful thing to see how many of our community members came, and some of them were familiar, and many of them were brand-new faces to us, so it was a, really a terrific turnout. So, I'd like to again thank LEED, Andy Duran from LEED, partners with us on the costs, but also on the organization. He does a really expert job at making all the arrangements for her. She's very well-cared-for while she was here. So, I've been speaking about some of the work that we are doing in our district about social-emotional learning, and particularly as it relates to the personalized scout portrait. And this is one of the slides that Gallup uses. You may recognize this from an earlier presentation that we had, but it spoke, at one of the conferences, I was fortunate enough to speak with, one of the guys that wrote, one of the authors of the student poll from the Gallup organization. This data comes from a thousand randomly-selected Americans on what they value about education, and there's an upshot to this. So, on the left is overwhelmingly, what people say are two things. They want kids to be engaged in their learning and their classwork, and they want kids who feel hopeful about their future. That is a really strong consensus from the American public. The things that they care least about are the scores that kids receive on standardized tests. The upshot of this is what information do schools provide to parents? Overwhelmingly, it is the stuff that they actually care about the least. So, in the development of the personalized scout portrait, there's no question in my mind, as I present on this, that we are on to something. So, the charge from the board is that we be nationally recognized for achieving significant intellectual or academic, social, and emotional growth for every student, and we're doing some work with Gallup. I've got a meeting with them this coming week on how we can have them create an instrument that we can dial into just that, every student, so that we can demonstrate social and emotional growth for every student. As I mentioned before, we're taking some baby steps on this with the student poll, and I wanted to give you a little preview of what you're going to see in January. This is the level of engagement nationally from fifth grade through 12th grade. There's almost a steady decline. 11th and 12th grade, there's a slight uptick there. This is something to speculate, whereas like whoever is left is sort of gotten over being engaged or being hopeful. There is one point of our students' scores, we've gotten the report back already, and that is that our kids are 22 points above the national norm on engagement. So, our 10th graders took this, and from the evidence that I've seen, the answers, it looks like they took it seriously. When I showed this to the writer of this poll, he said, man, it is unbelievable that you guys are that much above the norm. I'd love to come and find out what you're doing. So, this is one very positive point for a high school to be this high. So, this is the same level that 7th graders nationally are at, which is, it'd be terrific if it were 100, but nonetheless, 22 points above the national norm is really quite an indicator on this. So, I'll be, Patrick Sasson will be speaking more about this in January to us, and that completes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
No. Okay. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Okay, we have a report from Alan and Patrick on-
First, hi. My name's Ted Mormon. I live at 442 Michigan Lane, member of the public. For those that don't know me, hi. I'm Ted. That's what I said last night. Got a laugh. No, actually, I'm reporting for the American Legion first. You know, we often talk about what are the kids at the high school do, but I've got two things, community engagement. The American Legion was disappointed two years ago with, you know, the Veterans Day program that was held at the high school. I got- I got to tell you what I've heard from the Legion and what they wanted to say this time is, and the governor of Lake Forest leader says pretty much all of it. Dr. Holland and your kids, you guys hit it out of the park. It was awe-inspiring. The auditorium was full. The Legion really, really appreciates it. We appreciate the engagement and the fact that you guys really cared. And, you know, going along the lines, you know, I don't have to spend too much time. I only have three minutes. So the other thing I wanted to say, again, community engagement. Last night, as, you know, Sally mentioned and Superintendent mentioned, it was a phenomenal presentation. She hit it out of the park, and it was well-received by the community. The auditorium was full. And again, for those that were there, it's great. Now that we know it's on the website somewhere. If you didn't get a chance to go there, I'd, you know, take the opportunity to see it. And again, you know, it just shows our kids are more involved, not just in class, but in the community. So for that, thank you.
So now, an assessment report from Alan Wallert and Patrick Sasson.
All right. So good evening. Thank you for having us. This is always a good time of the year to be able to kind of step back and take a look at some of the data that we've called over the last, say, four to six months. And just for the sake of brevity for the presentation portion of tonight, we're really going to go over four areas. Some that we traditionally go over, and then a couple new things that, just based on new partnerships we have, provides us with new data that we can take a look at. So we will go over tonight a little bit of the ACT, SAT, and AP data, which we traditionally go over. And then we also want to just talk a little bit about our partnership with ECR and the next steps that that will, will yield down the road. So first, Patrick's going to talk a little bit about ACT.
Thank you, Alan. And again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to report on this tonight. We will be brief. I'm going to jump right into the ACT, as Alan mentioned. This is, this slide depicts the last ten years of composite scores for Lake Forest High School students in relation to the state composite scores. Having this depth of data for the ACT, since we've been utilizing it for so long, gives us the opportunity for longitudinal trends and making connections and expanding, you know, broadening the lens and stepping back and look at it. As Alan will touch, we don't have that, we don't have that luxury with SAT yet. But that's the exciting thing that we're looking at developing over the course of the next few years. For this, the takeaways here, our Lake Forest High School students are doing very consistently, very well. Over the course of the last ten years, the average is a twenty-six point two. You can see last year, our students came in at twenty-six point three and doing exceedingly well in comparison to the state standards. This is, this 2017 class graduated in May of 2017. Yes, correct. They're our most recent graduates. Taking the ACT, 2017, class of 2017 ACT, breaking it down by the subtests, the English, the reading, the math, and the science, taking those raw aggregate scores and then aligning them to the national percentiles gives us a better sense of where our Lake Forest High School students compare nationally. And they're impressive all the same as well.
So last year being my first year. Did you have a question?
And I know it's dangerous to play the game of comparing kind of up and down the North Shore, but relative to the percentile rank, does the data come out also sort of relative to our peers that we historically use as our benchmarks locally?
So I think you'll find the data to be pretty comparative. The thing that we really want to do, when you look at a growth-type model, which is what we're trying to steer towards from a, from a cultural standpoint in this community, is not only looking at what is our, say, composite score for juniors compared to those around us, but how do we grow kids over time? And that is really with Shayla's work, with Patrick's work, with my work, with the work of our teachers, that's the work that we really want to focus on. But I can say yes, from a percentile standpoint, we do compare and stack up very well to the surrounding high schools.
I mean, I guess my basis was, I mean, obviously, your growth, not that it becomes self-limited the higher performing you are, but it's, it's easier to grow from, you know, one to fifty than it is to grow from ninety to ninety-two.
So actually, when you look at the standardized test with ACT, the data that's come out with ACT is students that tend to come in with higher skills actually do have more room for growth. Whereas students who come in with lower skills, they, you have to get them up to grade level to then hope to exponentially grow them. So we have tremendous room for growth with all of our kids because we inherit kids who do really, really well. Did you have anything you wanted to add? So last year being my first year, with the SAT, the one thing that I'm very grateful for, and I don't remember if I mentioned this in last year's assessment report, is just the simple fact that we have a complete suite of assessments. Whereas prior years, there were gaps in whether or not the suite of ACT assessments were administered to kids. And so now with giving it to eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders, you'll be able to take a look at longitudinal growth of kids. The reason I have the apples to oranges up there is what I kind of alluded to earlier. And that is that comparing one grade level to another really doesn't truly measure student growth as much as measuring kids within a grade to themselves, year after year after year, to see if you grow them. So, you know, we don't have enough, right? This is just one year. It's a snapshot. But as you can see in our national percentile, as you can see how we did for one year, we did very well. We, we performed quite well on the SAT. The big thing is the last bullet point I mentioned, which is, you know, we want to be able to identify patterns over time. And that will guide our instruction in the classroom regarding the college readiness skills and college readiness standards.
I'll jump right into AP. The next three, the next three slides are going to detail the growth in our AP programming or growth in our AP enrollments over the course of the last five years. I say frequently in meetings, just as Shayla referenced, the core beliefs of the district in talking about assessment and grading practices aligned with sixty-five and sixty-seven. I see these data over the next three slides as indications of some core beliefs about students and the experiences that we want them to have. I say in meetings all the time, "I've been here about ten minutes." It's the work of the team here before I got here that really is, you know, netting some of the results. But as you can see with AP course enrollments, you know, in the last five years, specifically in the last four years, the number of enrollments in AP courses has increased eighty-five percent. Those are all the courses that students are enrolled in. Those are all the individual enrollments. So that's not just individual students involved in one course. That's every student that's taking an AP could be taking one, two, three, or four AP classes. And those enrollments, as you can see, are significant, are rising significantly. But the questions that we're asking ourselves and leadership team is, it's not just about the raw numbers of courses being taken, and it's not just about the tests being taken. It's truly the individual students that are having an opportunity at least once in their four years at Lake Forest High School to have a real rigorous college-level experience that we believe truly benefits them long-term. So we're looking at those numbers and comparing them to the number of AP enrollments. And we're seeing a rather similar increase over the last five years as well. And specifically in the last four years, we're seeing a sixty-two percent increase in the number of students in our building that are taking at least one AP, one AP course over the four years that they're with us at Lake Forest High School. And as I said, that ties into some core philosophies about what we value. It ties into our processes of having conversations between counselors and students, teachers and students, and the families that we're serving to really remove obstacles to AP access and provide as much access as possible for, for as many students as we believe. Lastly, we'll look at, by a percentage of our student population, going back five, four years, it's, you know, in the last four years, that percentage of the student population taking at least one AP exam has doubled. I believe a question came up last year about the thirty-nine percent and whether maybe we'd maxed out. Well, we hadn't. We grow, we grew. And Alan and I were talking today, and I, and we believe we can grow that number even more in years to come. I believe we're doing it for the right reasons. And I believe, you know, this past, this past performance is the best indicator of future performance. Thank you.
So this is a new slide. This is new data. And this is a little bit of a new way of drilling down and being able to identify students that do or do not meet a benchmark proficiency. So this is actually a snapshot of a scatter plot. When we partner with ECR and ECR breaks the data down for us, this is just an example of what we can do. So again, this is a snapshot or a screenshot, right? But when this is live and you're online, I can drag my mouse over all the different dots, and it literally gives me specific students. It literally lets us drill down to individual kids. And so this green line that you see here, that's the proficiency benchmark. That's the idea of meeting the standards. Now, so for example, this is the grade nine students from last year, this year's sophomores. So as you can see in the bottom-left-hand corner, of three hundred and fifteen students, twenty-four current sophomores did not meet the proficiency benchmark. But if you look at how we can interact based on our partnership with ECR, we can literally identify those students. And in the packet that we provide you, we can counter with identifying, what are the right supports to help them be successful? And so that's a very, very quick way to be able to do that. And I, I see a real commitment in our building to always trying to identify ways to help kids be successful. And every kid has different methodologies or different things that help them be successful. And so if you look at this, right, you take a look at this slide, this is kind of our process. These are our next steps. Can we identify populations of students that might be in need of more supports or interventions? When we look at them individually, look at their academic trajectory, look at any type of predictability within our tracking, try to create some type of plan for them to be successful, and then provide those interventions for those students. Where I think a lot of our, I mean, so we're doing that. That's all ongoing. If you look at number four, it says, "Review the effectiveness of interventions." A really, really effective school always looks to see not only if they're providing interventions for students, but if students are accessing those interventions, and if those interventions are proving to be successful, impactful. And then if there's supports we don't provide, identifying those, and then in an ongoing manner, continuing to expand the supports. And so it's a balancing act. Make the ones you have, the interventions you have, right? Make them better and expand ones if need be.
I have a question about that particular, if you go back.
Back here.
You make reference to the twenty-four sophomores. And you probably can't answer this off the top of your head. But what percentage of those twenty-four either have an IEP or a 504? How closely are those two, those two measurements linked? And I guess I have another question. If you are not meeting proficiency benchmarks, I suppose that's not automatically 504 territory, right?
No. To your first question, I think you highlighted on the things that we find so exciting. It gives it, our ability to pull those twenty-four students, identify that population, and really start identifying the individual characteristics of each student, whether they have an IEP, whether they have a 504, what they're currently placed in, what their trajectory in English and math and science, you know, and social studies is, what their talents and their abilities are, really drill down on each individual student. We'll find, and what are the trends? And then, then looking at the trends, and as we, as we develop cohorts of data, as these students develop with our PSA, with our SAT suite, what are the trajectories we're seeing for students of that profile over the course of four years? And do we want to interrupt that? And if so, to Alan's point, what are the interventions we need to do so? To your first question, I think it's exciting.
And Sally, I can address the question. So twenty-four sophomores, right? Ten of those twenty-four had an IEP and did not meet the benchmark standard. But we had twenty-five students with IEPs. Fifteen of them did. So more students did than did not meet the proficiency benchmark.
That's interesting, too. Right. You knew it wasn't going to be necessarily a one-to-one. I love that you knew that number. That's awesome.
I have a related question because, I mean, these are standardized test scores. And, you know, there, there can be a big grade test disparity for certain individuals if they have high anxiety and so on with tests. So is this really the measure we want to use to identify students? Or would it be better to focus on those who are struggling in their courses, not necessarily getting a bad grade on a, a bad score on an exam one day in April?
Absolutely. I mean, your, when, your point is well-taken. And we, as an assessment report, we're just giving an example of one type of snapshot that ECR can provide us with. But the work that we're doing on a day-in-and-day-out basis absolutely has us partnering with our teachers to identify students in need of interventions, and then we provide them with those interventions. So you're right. I mean, an assessment is, is not the, the main way of doing it. But from a skills deficiency standpoint, the one assertion I always make is, assessments like this, while not the end-all-be-all, they do provide, you know, reading for information, critical reading, critical writing skills, those type of things. If we can highlight areas where we need to do more work instructionally, that can provide us with valuable information, aside from, to your point, about the interventions that we provide.
So I, I guess I'm just not clear. Is this like a hypothetical? Or are you actually identifying these twenty-four students and reaching out and making sure that they're?
That's also a good question. So this is an example of the type of work we can do. We're not drilling down, looking at these twenty-four right now and doing it. But as we learn more about the type of data that ECR can partner, or that ECR can provide us with, that's an example of the type of work that we want to do, which, that's why this next steps is so important. Because by Patrick and I showing you this, this is kind of the processes we can go through to be more targeted. But as you brought up, there's a lot of other indicators that are kind of more in our face every day that let us know that we need to help kids in different ways.
Yeah, because I would just encourage, my bias would be to focus more on performance in the classroom because so much about test scores is sort of baked in before they even get to school. And I was, I was going to say about that. Oh, yeah. And I'd be very curious, I mean, I know we don't have individualized data from the Gallup, but I'd sure be interested to know how engaged those students are who are not doing as well.
Can I respond to all of this? First, I do want to mention that I am looking at that information. Our partnership with ECR has been really helpful because now we have easily-accessible data. What I'm looking at in terms of what's happening, and similar to information I shared with the board regarding our report card, this overlaps with that information. We are looking at our overall achievement, but we're also looking at the achievement of various subgroups identified in the report card. We're also looking at the intersection between some of those groups. Some of our kids show up across different categories, and it's important for us to know the different ways that, and how they're showing up. More specifically, in terms of this information, one of the things in building a personalized learning profile with ECR is that that platform, which is connected to where we also get these scatter plots and this type of data, provides us more with a comprehensive picture on that dashboard of what a student's entire experience has been during, while at high school. Additionally, because of our partnership with sixty-five and sixty-seven, we're able to look at seventh and eighth grade, start from seventh grade, and look at the trajectories for sophomores, for example, leading up to this point. Another layer of that, which has to be a part of the conversations, is not just regarding these assessment scores, but also qualitative information. Right now, as I mentioned, which is why I mentioned some of the work happening in District sixty-five, grades matter, but we're still at a point where we're trying to unpack what grades mean in our classes, just to be very open and transparent. And so if I show up on that scatter plot and I'm, my courses are pulled up, I'm actually... I'm actually, um, we're gonna go to teachers and actually talk about the experiences that students had in that class to make sense of, um, not just the grade, but their overall experience. Because, um, as you're mentioning, assessment data doesn't, um, it doesn't tell us everything about a student's experience. We can gather some regarding the trajectory, but, um, there are other layers that inform, um, how kids experience the school as well as how they perform on these assessments. Grades are, um, one way of looking at it, but we have to even go deeper than the grades that, um, we have. And so that actually is the work. This is the first year that we truly have access to this information, which is why they're sharing that. But that is our work for the year, um, as well as, um, the years to come to continue to unpack this and make sure that, um, we're able to also identify early warning signs or indicators so we can, um, support kids as they're coming into the high school. Um, through, um, eleventh grade is when they have their last major assessment, but twelfth grade and beyond.
Part of what we're doing with our work, uh, partnership with the eighth grade schools and the eighth grade teachers is drilling down to the level that Shayla is talking about and asking those type of qualitative questions to find out more about the student as a learner rather than just like numbers, right, and grades. Finding out what type of supports these students might benefit from. And, and I'm really proud of that work that we're doing because we end, we are, we're going more towards the individual student as a learner and finding out what will help them be successful when they get to us.
So question, Alan, the slide that you had that listed all the wonderful supports, that's being used currently with kids that you have identified at risk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You mean this last slide?
Yes, that one.
So th- this is kind of the process that we're in right now of, of going through these steps to be able to identify, as Shayla said, different subgroups, identify populations and needs, and then look at these students, um, and find out what we need to do to help them be successful.
So it's not, all of you have seen the range of tier one, two and three supports that we have. This is actually answering the question. So you have this information now about students. How are you going to unpack it and examine it to, um, support improvements and achievement? This is what this slide represents.
And I was gonna say, it's, it's so, um, gratifying to be on the journey with you guys and see how now the tier, the tiered supports that you introduced to us last year now match up to indicating with the data where and how to apply it. Because now we have a system that is more individually appropriate as opposed to everybody gets an IEP, which was never the right solution. So it's, it's really cool to see all those pieces converging.
It's also nice to see how the PSAT and SAT suites are playing into it now. That, that was a nice illustration. I know it's just one aspect of it, but it was nice to see how this is coming together in a manner that the ACT never could.
Just one last question, kind of an offshoot with, uh, AP courses and AP testing. Uh, I happen to know a student who took two AP courses, did really well, but didn't want to take the test. And, you know, my question was, well, is it, um, was it cost getting up on Saturday morning? Or are there any ramifications in not doing well or, you know, and not trying to be a helicopter parent that Sally is?
It's too late. You and I both failed.
Okay. Anyway, I was just wondering, you know, just how to support students and, you know, take it for their own gratification if nothing else.
I can respond to that. Last year, at the end of the year, uh, when we gave the final strategic plan report, we reported out on the number of kids who took the exam. And I mentioned that there were, um, more than ever. Um, last year we had a large, a larger number. Um, and it wasn't outrageous, but we had a lot of kids deciding last, at the last minute, not to take the exam. Um, part of that, um, in asking them what was going on and they were asking for refunds for the exam. Um, some of them did not need it for their college. Um, they were, the college was more focused on the fact that they took the course um, rather than taking the exam. In some cases, some kids didn't feel ready or they were worried around about how they would do. Um, but overwhelmingly, um, the majority of the kids who came to the office and said they weren't gonna take the exam, it was because they no longer, they didn't need it, um, for what they planned to do or where they planned to go. And we're finding that more schools, um, aren't requiring or they're only, are accepting specific, um, scores. And so that's changing how our kids are engaging with the exam. Of course, we recommend at least they know, um, they'll have more information about what they've acquired and learned. But a lot of our kids are actually taking the courses for the learning experience, um, more so than how they're doing on the exam. And we're always caught in the middle because a lot of how students engage with our courses depends on where they want to go next. Um, so we're trying to continue to learn more about what, what is motivating kids to take these higher level courses. Um, and when they don't take the exam, sometimes we're able to ask different questions of them.
College Board provides research, they provide specific data, for specific percentages around a student who takes an AP class but chooses to not take the test and how, what percentage they have of, of likely graduating from college. Versus a student who takes the AP class, takes the AP test and passes the AP test, might have a little bit higher likelihood of graduating from college. But at the end of the day, a student who still has that rich experience with high-quality instruction and, and rigor is gonna have a higher likelihood of being successful in higher education. And so I echo Shayla's sentiments. We're, we're proud of kids who even have that experience. And if they don't need that test to get into said university, it's hard to debate them. But we always encourage it, but we respect it when they choose not to.
It shows up, I mean, we get those scores and we report them out. Um, so no one wants to see their number on the low end when, um, school-wide reports come out. Of course, students aren't named. Additionally, um, sometimes there's competition with our faculty regarding how they do with that stuff as well. So it's, it's layered.
There's also interpretations of what is a low score. I mean, there's some in this community that think a three is a low score. Last time I checked, it's passing. So there's that as well, right? So there's, there's a variety of factors that, that might play into that, but our, our kids by and large do very, very well when they take it.
If I read between lines, I mean, as a personal student-wise though, there's no penalties for scoring low. Aside from maybe a little blow to your self-esteem for not scoring as well as you'd hope to score.
No.
No.
I mean, that.
I, I think a little bit of student education would be valuable too because the one place where the most learning takes place is in studying and sitting for an assessment. So to take, go through an AP course and not do the AP exam, you actually are, are missing out on the most potent learning opportunity there is. So regardless of what you're, I mean, that's why I made my kid do it, you know? This is when you're gonna learn this stuff. I don't care what you get. Um, but that's sort of a proven fact of learning theory.
Well said. And, and I would just like to echo that. I, I know my daughter, Keely, who went to Woodlands, not at the high school, but, uh, it was nice as a second semester senior when taking the AP exam, uh, that she didn't then have to turn and sit for final exams in the course, assuming you had a certain grade level going into the AP exam. So it was a, it wasn't a singular event as much as a combination of proven proficiency. I think it helped de-stress a lot of the sort of sense of double work or studying for two different types of, of, of exams. And that may be a thought going forward as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So next up are our committee reports. Education Committee, please.
Sorry, our last meeting was, um, November seventh. And we began, um, a, a series of meetings where we're hearing from each of the instructional directors. We thought we could squeeze it into two meetings, but it's, it's looking like it's gonna take three meetings. So, um, after, uh, Dr. Wallert gave an overview of the, um, you know, overall, uh, uh, goals of, of all of the departments with regard to differentiated instruction, assessment and environment. Um, we heard from Kristen Carlson about the mission and accomplishments of the English department, from Stephen Dunn, uh, about the same, um, goals in the social studies department, and then from Ryan Abrams about the science department. And, um, I think a theme, uh, Dr. Abrams mentioned that really came through, um, in several of the, uh, departments was that, um, there's been this mission to align the assessments across multiple classes, which is a new thing. Um, is that, was this just the first year that, uh, that's happened? Um, so that the same courses have the same assessments.
Oh, no, that's actually been written into our strategic plan as part of our mapping work to make sure that, um, we're not only clarifying our learning expectations, but our assessments let us know where kids are with the learning and that, um, there are some shared assessments across or within the same courses.
Right, which will standardize the, uh, experience. Um, and then the other thing that was really positive that we heard from all the departments was about the, um, success of, uh, the co-teaching and inclusion, that how, how advantageous that's been, um, to getting kids out of, um, special ed classes and, and, uh, in greater inclusion. So our, and the Illinois report card really shows our, um, our success in that compared to a lot of other peer districts. So all, uh, really good news and it's really gratifying for the committee, I think, to get this really in-depth overview of each of the departments. Um, and I think I mentioned last meeting that we have an opening for a community member. We did receive, uh, a number of applications and, uh, we'll be sorting through those and interviewing people in December. Um, so we'll seat a new community member for our, uh, February meeting.
Thank you. Next, uh, has there been a finance and ops meeting?
No.
Okay.
No, we had no meeting.
Okay. Um, policy, Diana, was, was there a policy committee meeting, Diana or Ted? No, we haven't met since the last board meeting. Okay. And again, I want to thank Diana for chairing the last policy meeting. Uh, liaison reports, Ed Redd, Sally, anything to talk about there?
I'm personally aggrieved that I reported to you at the last board meeting that the pending legislation, uh, for the property tax freeze was not going to pass because forty-eight hours later, the Senate passed it. Um, but, uh, the House has not, uh, forgive me, the House has passed it, the Senate has not. So during the veto session, um, on the eighteenth of November, the House passed, um, a bill that would freeze property taxes for two years, starting with the current, um, two thousand seventeen. So it would be what would appear on our property taxes in two thousand eighteen. Um, the Senate has not considered it. They would have to take it up in, uh, the January session when, uh, Diana and I and several members of District sixty-seven and Superintendent Simic were at the joint, uh, annual meeting of the various, um, associations that we belong to, including the Illinois Association of School Boards in November. I attended a legislative session where several of the state representatives and state senators, um, as well as the superintendent for the state of Illinois were present. They talked about it in detail. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it because I don't think it's going to pass. I know I'm saying that again. Um, the things that we ought to consider, it's a, it's a flat property tax freeze and it is not squared with the fact that the, um, evidence-based funding legislation that we've talked about in great detail also provides for a voter referendum mechanism to freeze or lower property taxes. So it's, it's out of sync with that. And one of the things that all of the state representatives who were present were very aware of is that that could result in a district hitting a double whammy. That is, not only could you have a property tax freeze, but you could also then face a voter referendum that would lower your taxes further. The second thing is, um, that if we are to move forward with any measure of, um, adequacy funding in the state of Illinois, we are not at a place where we can take a property tax freeze and, um, affect the way that education is funded. So one of the things that they were sort of musing about, not as if they had, you know, actual knowledge of how this is gonna play out, is that education funding might somehow be exempt from what would is otherwise a property tax freeze. The last piece was that they did a whole bunch of kind of political guesswork around the upcoming gubernatorial election and whether or not a budget needs to be passed. So there's so much political, um, variance that's at play that I think it's almost impossible to predict where we'll land. They all were very candid in saying, the problem with a property tax freeze is that it is super attractive to legislators because it looks really good in the paper, but the reality is we don't assess, we don't levy property taxes and we don't spend them. So we can do whatever we want with your property taxes and we can look good doing it and it doesn't affect anything that the state does. And so they said, that's probably the biggest fear is that it might be a, a quick political win for them. So stay tuned.
Sounds fun. Um, NSSCD, Ted?
Yeah, we let, last met about a month ago. Uh, Mike, Mike is a new superintendent member of the, uh, board. So welcome aboard the board. That's redundant. Uh, normally our meetings are very collegial and I don't have much to report and it's just kind of boring. I think last month was the first time it was a kind of a, became a, kind of a brawl. Then, uh, with districts to the south, and it all started around mission vision goals. They're, they're going through, you know, we have a new superintendent and we really haven't had a mission vision goal and statements uh, in probably ten, fifteen years or ever. And so they're just starting the process of working, uh, to create the vision, you know, what it, what it is. And it's really different when you're eighteen board members plus superintendents. Uh, and then you have, uh, eighteen different, you know, needs, so to speak. Some di- districts need a lot more. And what they're really trying to do is help every district, because every district has a special ed need of some sort. And, you know, it could be you have, your special ed kids are that you have special high achievers or, you know? Um, so it's ju, it's not just saying you have kids that need help. But anyway, it started with, uh, several districts to the south, the far south of our consortium felt that they, uh, NSSCD was breaking with the charter that they have from the state and trying to become a de facto new high school teaching like AP courses. Uh, it's, that's not the case, but I don't know how it kind of went off the rails and like, and actually Mike was involved with some more of the background meetings that, so if you want to comment on that.
Oh, boy. Um, trying to wade into, it's, it's, it's a complicated affair. There are, uh, NSSCD has, uh, brought about a hundred and forty people together. Ted and I went to one of the meetings and asked that group to imagine what a future looks like for the cooperative. And, uh, the, the feedback that they got, uh, was to go in a direction that is to expand, uh, very consistently to expand the reach of NSSCD beyond special ed students. Uh, some of the rationale for that is that while a student may be special ed, student may be, uh, s, uh, second language, uh, SEL student or might have, uh, social emotional needs or could be, um, any number of, uh, of different things beyond being simply special ed. So there's a whole population of students that could potentially be served here. And there is a question about the propriety of expanding the scope of the organization to encompass all students rather than students with specific disabilities. Uh, I'm a, a significant proponent of that. When we look at what our needs are. Uh, we have, the high school has two kids in NSSCD right now. Uh, some years we, uh, may have one or two more or zero in, in the cooperative. So, uh, in, in addition to being a insurance policy, what is it that we hope to have and receive from the cooperative? Well, one of the things that, that we stand to benefit from is we are bringing more and more students back from outplacement programs and also we are striving really significantly to keep all of our students within our school district. Uh, how do we develop the capacity of our staff to do that? So we're not. How do we develop the capacity of our staff to do that so we're not sending kids away? And part of that is, frankly, the more disabled a student is for, say, our adult population, the more likely it is that they're going to remain in this community for the rest of their lives. And they may be living independently, but their parents will want them near home. And so I see this as a really important community issue that we embrace all of these kids, and our staff has a lot of capacity building to do. You know, what do we do? We have a growing population of English language learners, for example. Historically, the district has added very few English language learners, low-income kids. And how do we meet the needs of students that are somewhat different demographically than what has historically been a student in our district? These kids can and will succeed, but it's going to take a significant amount of work from us to place them appropriately in classes, to support them appropriately in classes, and to move them through a very competitive school system. And so I see one of the resources for us being, we don't know what to do with a student, we need to send the student to NSACD. It is come on in and develop our staff, develop our administrators, enhance our capacity to work with every student that walks in our doors. So there is some dispute over whether that is a viable future for the cooperative, and I think that's the, I hope that we are able to navigate through this. Obviously, I'm interested and impassioned about it. Shayla's played a very significant role, as I have, in different groups. I meet with superintendent's groups, and Shayla's been on some of the steering committees looking at value statements and whatnot. Shayla, would you like to chime in, too?
I would. I've been writing this strategic plan with a really small group for NSSCD and at the ground level and looking at knowing where the dispute is. NSSCD does not feel like, they're not trying to, I think where the disconnect is around awe. So how that's being framed, NSSCD, like our district, believes that when you support the kids with the greatest needs, it benefits everyone. Similar to the way we've talked about co-teaching, co-facilitation, everyone, every student benefits from having learning expectations and a pathway to success clarified. Some kids, the expectations are the same, but every kid might need something different, or kids might need something different to get there. And so that's how NSSCD is really, that's the foundation of the language, that's the meaning of the language in the strategic plan. But sometimes when people hear awe, they feel like students with different needs are going to be left out. And so it's really around educating all of our, all of the districts that are members of NSSCD around equity versus equality. And really, the work is around equity, making sure that students have what they need, recognizing that students don't need the same thing. They're not all starting from the same place, and they all have their own unique learning styles. So I feel like in some of the conflict that might exist is a lack of understanding regarding the charges really around equity and supporting kids with what they need, as well as thinking about awe. And it's not necessary that NSCD is planning on going off in all these different areas. It's recognizing that for our teachers, when they come and do professional development for us, or when our teachers go, every time a teacher learns skills to, or starts thinking about how to address the needs of specific populations of kids, when they take that back to the classroom, it benefits everyone in the classroom. So that's what NSSCD is really looking at. How can we make sure professional development supports the needs that each district has, but also works with districts to see the benefits of this work with all of our kids?
Are these districts, I don't understand the objection, just overreaching?
Well, part of it...
Do you feel like they're going to have to pay for?
No, I think they feel that, well, first, it's overreach of the charter, which is at its most base forms, special ed. But, and really, it's, as Shayla said, it's a, it's basically a level of understanding. All kids have, you know, we have kids that have special ed needs, you know, it might be social emotional, which is probably one of our bigger issues. So, you know, that's an area where NSSCD can really help us and help, you know, our staff support, so...
But do these southern, southern, more southern, they have an NSSCD right now?
They probably do. Like, as Mike said, we have two right now.
So they still have...
I don't know if it's that, but it could be. You know, it's hard to get it, yeah, I don't want to speak for them because right now we're just in the early stages of fleshing it out. Like, I'm with one of the finance meetings with them Thursday morning. And again, we have a meeting tomorrow night, and nobody's taking me up on it. So moving on to the next issue, NSSCD is doing their annual fund drive. Pass these down, there's a letter, and if anybody would like to contribute, and if they want to save a stamp, you can give it back to me at the next meeting, and I'll take it there the next night. And also, in addition to that, I tried to corral Dr. Nemecus last year and have Illinois Bone and Joint be the gold sponsor of their 5K, Cara-sponsored run, which is next May. And I think I've got him corralled for this year.
I've told you, I'll be happy to let the corporate, remember, I stepped off all the boards in order to step onto this board, so I've lost all my power.
Well, sometimes it's good to have no power, but anyway, I'll be talking to you, and then you can talk to the people that are in power, because...
I'd be happy to advocate, Ted, absolutely.
Appreciate it. Like I said, NSSCD is a great group, and the foundation actually, kind of like our foundation, supplements areas where it may not be appropriate for tax dollars to go for something that's a real benefit to the students. And right now, the foundation has about $80,000 to work with, and we use it. We give grants to teachers, student teachers that are coming into the special ed field as well as, for instance, we have a group from NSAEE Academy that they were going to go down to Houston to do, help out in recovery efforts. We thought maybe that's a little aggressive for them, so now they're going to go to Quad Cities and try something a little closer to home, but it all takes money. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Diana, anything to report on the foundation's APT, other organizations? What's the third?
Boosters.
Boosters.
APT, the holidays are upon us at the APT, and tomorrow, December 5th, Liz Gashidle, who's the president of APT, is hosting the holiday brunch to celebrate all the good that the APT has done this year and will continue to do. Boosters, the exciting news is that the Spirit Store has new hours, so you can get all your spirits, your Scout spirit gear. They're now open every Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday from 11 to 3, so Christmas gifts can be purchased. And from now until December 23rd, they're also open Wednesday nights, so tomorrow night from 5 to 8, and Saturdays from 9 to 12. So they are stocked and they are ready to sell. So swing by for your Christmas holiday shopping needs. Shayla and the students alluded to the fact that winter sports have begun, so there's a lot going on, so check the school website on a daily basis to find out all the things you might want to come to. As a special note, the, on December 14th, the Field Hockey State Championship Team will be honored at the girls' basketball game, and they will get their Illinois State Championship Board, which is the cutout that looks like the state of Illinois that's as big as we are. And cheer and palms will also perform at that girls' basketball event. So if you have some free time on the 14th, that might be something to come out and support the Scouts with. And then, I know I've mentioned it before, but the Booster Bash is taking place on March 10th at the Gorton Center, and they're currently looking for experience items. So if you have any tickets to sporting events, theater performances, wine tastings, it was not me that said that, I promise David. Anyway, hotel rooms, resorts, condos, et cetera, they would love to talk to you if you would like to make a charitable donation, and all the money will go back to the kids and to the school. And I was, Sally and I tag teamed with the foundation, and so she went to the foundation.
Very quickly, the foundation meeting last month spent the majority of the time evaluating the success of Foundation Month, which was largely a series of events partnering with retailers in and around Lake Forest and Lake Bluff who would give a portion of the proceeds of sales on a given day to the foundation. I think that it was trending that the biggest success was the pie sales for Thanksgiving that were done by Jay Levels Restaurant, and so I think they wanted to say thank you to all of the community members who participated, and I think that they are expecting to see that grow exponentially next year. Jim Sullivan came and talked to the foundation about several initiatives, including the recently concluded job shadowing that was done over Veterans Weekend, as well as a lot of projects that are gearing up in terms of college and career readiness, including the first-ever, it's not fair to say job fair, it's kind of job experience.
Career fair.
Career fair. And Jim is in the process of reaching out to many of us to see who would be willing to play a role in that, as well as working on increasing internship experiences over this summer. And so I'm going to make my pitch that I hope he's going to come and talk to us at a board meeting sometime soon, probably is. Okay. And then the last thing is that their next meeting, because the foundation's next meeting is their holiday party, which is a week from tomorrow, and you can get information on the website. Thanks.
Okay, we now move on to the action items part of our agenda. First one up is the adoption of the final 2017 levy. We approved the tentative levy last month, so may I have a motion to adopt the 2017 levy?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education adopt the 2017 levy.
Second?
Second.
Any thoughts, discussion, questions for Jen? Anything to report, Jen, since last month? No changes? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Very excited about this one. Adoption of a resolution approving the principal's multi-year performance-based contract. So may I have a motion to adopt the resolution approving the principal's multi-year performance-based contract with a slight adjustment that we discussed in our executive session.
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education adopt the resolution approving principal's multi-year performance-based contract.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Close session.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, thoughts, questions?
Yay!
Yay? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
An enthusiastic aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of our Human Resources Report, included in your packet. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, thoughts, questions on any items on the report? None? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the Consent Agenda item. Consent Agenda items, I'll remind everybody that any item may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of any board member. So may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items, including approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for October 2017, acknowledgement of Graham donation of lacrosse equipment, very thankful, minutes of a regular meeting from November 6, 2017, minutes of an executive session, November 6, 2017, disposal of audio recordings from December 1, 2015. So may I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Consent Agenda items as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I think for the first month this year, there are no FOIA requests. Is that true?
Would be first and last, right?
Won't be last. Some announcements, the Holiday Concert and Spaghetti Dinner at the RMA is at 3:00 PM on Sunday, December 10th. December 18th through January 2nd is winter break. School reopens on Wednesday, January 3rd, and our next Board of Education meeting will be Monday, not Tuesday, Monday, 7:00 PM, right here in this same room. So may I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.